At this time, I request any deletions, corrections, or additions to the agenda. In order to add an item to the agenda, the matter must have come to the attention of the county subsequent to the posting of the agenda, and the matter requires action before the next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. I do have a couple of changes. Item number three and item number six will be moved to general government, and we will be discussing those items. They will be taken off of the consent. Any other corrections or additions? Seeing none, at this time, we're going to get some brief reports and announcements from supervisors. Supervisor Gitlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a rather lengthy report, so please bear with me. Yesterday, I traveled to Eureka to attend the Area One Agency on Aging meeting and discuss the group's effect of the anticipated, what's called the Silver Tsunami. In the next decade, Delnor County can expect at least a 25% growth and possibly more of the community that is of seniors. And people are living longer and they're living healthier, so what is going to be the answer? And that was what was discussed yesterday, and the answer came clearly back that we have to have a more expansive program of volunteerism. So we need to engage this vibrant population of volunteer seniors with activities to assist those in need, including, most importantly, our children. So the advisory will be also meeting in Delnor County at the Senior Center, March 19th. I hope you can make your plans and join us there. Yesterday's LAFCO meeting, nothing to report. At our last board meeting, I reported on a future facilities meeting, the events that took place. What I did not report was the request by Health and Human Services to replace our soon-to-be obsolete generators. When I inquired about the permitting process of these machines, I was told that the North Coast Unified Air Quality Management District in Eureka mandated the upgrades due to changes in state law. The cost for the new machines would impact the budget to the tune of about $9,000. While as I sit on the AQMD Board, after the meeting, I spoke with Director Brian Wilson and affirmed the new regulation. He affirmed these new regulations, but in further discussion, the air pollution control officer researched and found the appropriate justification to maintain current permitting processes by having the machines declared stationary and not portable since they serve at one site. And that was where the language becomes specific, since these are dedicated machines at specific sites. So I want to acknowledge Mr. Wilson for finding that and then saving the general fund about $9,000. We will not need to replace new generators in July 1st of this year. So thank you to the North Coast Unified Air Quality Management District for its intervention. Wednesday, February 11th, I attended a special meeting in the Crescent City Harbor Conference at the conference room presented by the Army Corps of Engineers. The subject, what to do with the dredging inventory over the next two decades? The harbor will periodically be dredged to accommodate all vessels, and what becomes of the dredging material became the big question. There are many areas of our coastline which have suffered beach erosion, and it's hoped that these areas can be explored for possible relocation of the dredging material. The Army Corps plan is a long-term one, and the public will have additional opportunity to weigh in on this item. Visitors Bureau met for its annual retreat. Priorities and goals were established. Delnor County continues to enjoy substantial increases in annual visitor population. There will be a stronger influence on social media in reaching the population of those who visit our beautiful part of the world here. And for more information on the Visitor Bureau activities, I encourage you all to look at our website, exploredelnor.com. Friday, the 13th, Friday, February 13th, I listened to a presentation by the Crescent City Planner, Eric Taylor, sponsored by the Chamber Commerce at the First Five. He spoke about the process of how to open a business in the city. Also at the meeting, I was pleased to introduce the soon-to-be Chamber Commerce Board Member, Kevin Bingham, and he will be the new owner of Glenn's on Third Street, which will be opening, I'm anticipating, by April. So I plan to be a regular there every Wednesdays and Saturdays, once that comes open, to meet with and listen to constituents and their concerns. Saturday night, Angela and I enjoyed a wonderful kickoff dinner at the Delnor Fair Board at the fairgrounds. I continue to be very enthusiastic about the opportunity to redefine our fair now that Measure F has passed. The county fair and other fair districts across the state and around the country will be looking very closely at how we develop our own fair. Last Tuesday, I participated in the California State Association Counties Administration of Justice Meeting via a conference call. One of the subjects discussed was the role the community plays in placing recently paroled and released prison and jail inmates as they attempt to integrate themselves back into our society. So the discussion point was the issuing of appropriate state identification. It's issued by the Department of Motor Vehicles. It looks like a driver's license. It's not a driver's license, but it appears to be one, and this gives the recently released individual an opportunity to identify himself and secure housing, very important. There was another point discussed concerning the waiving of court fines and charges for some of those, for those who've been released, and I think we need to have additional conversation in how someone can repay their debt, and not necessarily in the form of cash, but in the form of community service hours. So I'll be meeting with the Chief Probation Officer, Lonnie Raymond, to further discuss how fines and court costs can be addressed. That evening, I addressed the City Council about the spade of recent graffiti, how the problem can be addressed. I asked the City Council to consider ordinance to have all such blight removed within 72 hours of observation. Immediately following that meeting, I headed over to the fairgrounds to listen to and participate in a debate about the future of our hospital. I was pleased to see the hospital CEO Mitch Hannah was participating in exchange viewpoints with Dr. Gregory Duncan, and I continue to be troubled by the hospital's unwillingness to discuss real numbers of Sutter Coast profitability. As you know, they declared a profit in the first quarter of 2014, excuse me, last quarter of 2014. There'll be much more to discuss on this vital issue about how medical services are delivered to Delnor County, and the public is very engaged on this issue. In following up with my recent meeting with the Department of Fish and Wildlife on blighted conditions in our county, I was escorted by department personnel over a number of fish and wildlife parcels. I was very pleased to tell you here at this time, there's very little blighted property which is owned by Fish and Wildlife, and other than the one area which we identified near 101 South, near Ender's Beach Road, and we're going to arrange a take-a-bite-out-of-blight private cleanup of this area at the end of March. I want to thank Karen Kovats of Fish and Wildlife for helping coordinate this community event, and I would ask any of you to please give me a call at my office if you're interested in volunteering for this cleanup at the end of March. We also participated in the quarterly Intergovernmental Relations Committee at the wastewater treatment plant this past week, and the Veterans Justice Meeting at the Auditor's Conference Room. Nothing substantive to report at this time. Also, Angela and I attended a fundraiser at Pine Grove School to benefit four-year-old Corbin Chafee, who is fighting cancer, and finally had an opportunity to sit down one-on-one with Senator Mike McGuire. I didn't really have the opportunity to speak with him prior, after, since his election. He was very engaged, and he listened to our feedback and what I felt were the key issues in Delnor County, which include the last chance grade and the 199, 197 projects, the future of Sutter Coast Hospital, the airport, and economic development, including how, and he kind of was interested in this, and how we can open up the famous St. George Reef Lighthouse, which has been closed since 2011. So he sits on transportation. He's going to be looking into how we can open that up to the public as beautiful Lady St. George. He was very engaging, and he was actually very receptive to an idea I suggested to him about embracing Delnor County as a tax-free enterprise zone. That's my report.
Thank you. Supervisor McClure.
Yes, thank you. I have had several meetings since our last go-around. I left and went to Pismo Beach, and we had a three-day meeting of the Coastal Commission, and those meetings ran from 9:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. at night on both Wednesday and Thursday, so they're fairly grueling, but we did some good business and got stuff done, which is important. The Redwood Coast Transit Authority met, and we primarily went over different things that are going to be submitted to local transportation authority, but there's also a fifth member of the board that's missing, and that's the public member, and it's been a vacant position for a number of years. And what that public member does is that they participate as a voting member on the board of the Redwood Coast Transit Authority, and the Redwood Coast Transit Authority identifies the routes for public transportation, identifies the needs for public transportation. We've been very clear that we want to keep the dial-a-ride component of the public transportation system open for seniors and folks with disabilities that need to call ahead, and so that's been an important aspect of what we do. We have, you know, attempted to expand our routes, to connect Hayuchi to Crescent City. We've been successful now in being able to connect with the Greyhound, so people can go from Crescent City to anywhere in the world on a bus, in the United States on a bus, and that we have an agreement with Greyhound, we're able to sell tickets with them. So it's that kind of activity that we do, and I think it's a really, it's an important aspect of our community, and there's definitely an empty spot on the board that if anyone is interested, they can do applications at the clerk's office. There's going to be an ad soon, advertising for an out-large member, but I would encourage people to think about it. It's not extremely time-consuming, but it's extremely important to make sure that our transit system works, and so I would encourage people to participate in that. The Historical Society met, and everything is going, just clicking along fairly well. We did about an hour and a half worth of sessions where people have donated stuff to the museum, and we try to incorporate that into the collection that we have. And the Historical Society has agreed to participate in the spring fair that's going to happen, and I don't know if people are aware of it, but in, I think it's May 8th, 9th, and 10th, we're actually going to have a bit of a fair at the fairgrounds. They're going to have, so we're going to have a spring fair, which I'm kind of excited about. I met with, the Senior Center met, and we are still in recovery mode as far as trying to figure out what to do next, our next steps in relationship to the energy program. It appears that we definitely have the portion of the energy program that assists people with their utility bills if they find themselves in a predicament where they can't pay for their utilities, or if they can't find themselves in a predicament where they need wood. The Senior Center is available, and there's forms to fill out, and it's income-eligible, but that program has now been brought back to Crescent City, and it will be administered out of the Senior Center, which is a very giant step forward. And I have read the last chance grade economic report, which I think was very good. It's a step in the direction that we have to take, because if we don't have the data, we don't get, we don't get put to the front of the line in relationship to getting things done and getting it fixed. This afternoon, I will be meeting with the Solid Waste Board Authority, where we are attempting to find a more convenient date, because I've been assigned to that board, but I am in conflict with my Coastal Commission meetings, but would like to bring my, the history of the Solid Waste Board and my information about California integrated waste management requirements and rules to be able to participate on that board and move that board forward, because I have some ideas of stuff that we could do as a community. The Joint Committee on Emergency Medical Services, we did a quite lengthy phone meeting, and the primary concern was that St. Joseph's in Eureka was requesting a new ambulance service because they have fallen out of their partnership with City Ambulance that serves both Eureka and Fortuna, and they wanted to bring in another ambulance company from somewhere else. And the EMS is more apt to look at having guaranteed zones of service. So it's, an ambulance company would be guaranteed. For instance, the Arcata Ambulance Company is in a zone that from midway between Arcata and Eureka to the Humboldt County border, that is their area of service, because many times if you come into a small community with too many providers, you end up with nobody making the bottom line, and you risk the possibility of disrupting emergency services. So we are in the process of doing actual zones identified for service, because with the proposal that St. Joseph brought forward, it would have left Garberville without any service. And I know that if I'm in the car coming home and a tree hits me, I really want to be able to have someone come and assist me to get me to Redwood Memorial in Fortuna. So we're working on that. It seems that there might be some negotiation power with the EMS group and with City Ambulance and with St. Joseph's, but it's, it kind of made me nervous because I saw the St. Joseph's organization at a state level wanting to use their specific provider. And we really need to make sure that our local service is covered and that people are able to operate and make, and meet their bottom line in order to stay in service. So that one, I will keep people posted on. I have had several constituent calls in relationship to people camping on Pebble Beach and have talked with Parks and Recreation, and we do have an ordinance that is not, that people are not allowed to camp on the beach, and they're going to be working on replacing the signs that were there years ago to remind people that it's a public beach, but it's not an overnight camping spot, since there are no facilities for restrooms and that kind of thing. I also brought up to Parks and Recreation Department, Maintenance Department about the possibility of hazard trees, and I'm not sure exactly where all of our hazard trees would be, but after that last storm, when I saw some of the damage that happened, primarily in the city, but when I saw that damage, it seems to me that the county would want to do an assessment of which trees we have and where. If we have hazard trees that are going to take out a car or a person or a house, we need to be making a plan with those. I am on my way to meetings this week. Juvenile Justice will meet, where we have oversight over the Barrow and the Juvenile Hall and activities that probation does with our youth in an attempt to, one thing that's different with juvenile justice is juvenile justice is designed to assist people to find a path that is a little bit better than incarceration, and so it attempts to move the young person towards better choices, and that's one of the things that we do at juvenile justice. I am also having a meeting this week, a joint meeting with Redwood Coast Transit Authority and the Local Transportation Commission. We're having a joint, almost like a two-by-two committee meeting to make sure that we're all on the same pages, because there is some dollars that are coming in that could possibly be held for projects, and so we're going to possibly talk about that. And I am on my way in about a week or so to an organization that's called Building Living Communities, and it's part of the California Endowment, and it is a group of elected officials and a group of people that are working towards having communities that are livable and that we can have, that we can sustain. And the glorious part about that one is it's my second year that I'm going there, but it's held at Yosemite, which is a pretty nice place to be able to have a meeting, so I'm looking forward to that. And that's about it. If anybody is looking at their dirt in their backyard, it's time to make sure that all your garlic and your onions and your goodies are in, because I've been working on that, and I anticipate a full garden in the spring. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Supervisor Howard.
Thank you, Chairman. I won't repeat what Roger said on the IGRC meeting. I also attended that with Roger and CAO Serena. Attended last night a meeting of the Smith River Community Service District to help address concerns from not only the Smith River community, but also the Community Service District specific to the county's Fred Hay Drive project. Community Development Department, led by Director Kuntz, allowed Engineer Jim Barnes out to speak with the public concerning the issue of Fred Hay Drive. Most of the concerns were related to drainage into Ratty Creek and potential effects of rerouting water adjacent to the Community Service District's wells. I believe, based on comments received by both the Community Service District and the public, that those concerns have been met, but future projects potentially related to Fred Hay Drive to potentially re-channel water further down and away from the Smith River Community Service District's water collection stations or wells will be something I think we should look into the, into the future with the Community Development Department. But so far, it looks like the project will move forward, which is good, because I know it's been on the plate for probably close to 10 years now, and I know the community's really looking forward to Fred Hay being accomplished this summer. Also attended the Delnor Community Food Council, which has been very invigorated and energized in the last year, being led mostly by Angela Glor and Connor Caldwell. They've done an excellent job in keeping the community focused on health and, more importantly, growing community-type gardens, which I think, when you look at it from a food chain aspect, I think it's very important for our community to continue those healthy type living aspects and creating goals which will lead to farming in our community, which is one of our heritages. Also attended the Smith River Neighborhood Watch meeting. We heard at that meeting from Sheriff Aperson. He's been very active in the Smith River community and focusing attention up there, and also Officer Griffin. It's good to see the attention that Sheriff Aperson is currently bringing to Smith River Neighborhood Watch, but more importantly, the work that he's been doing with Smith River Rancheria in helping to bridge some communication gaps that might have existed previously, but the communication is nice to see, and more important, it's nice to see officers in the neighborhood and a transparency in how communication is taking place between the Neighborhood Watch and the Sheriff's Department. Also attended the Safe and Healthy Families Committee. Most of the conversations involved goal-setting around children, which I think is a very important aspect of where the county board hopes to engage this year, and how various departments within Delnor County will, will engage around those children's goals and how that affects how they budget in the future. I think it's very important that we continue to pay close attention to literacy as a board in Delnor County and working very closely with the Delnor County School District, because it can only help downstream, and when I mean downstream, with our incarceration rates, with the amount of folks that visit Juvenile Hall and other courses that I know literacy is definitely linked to. And if we can move upstream and focus a lot on literacy in the future at a very young age, I know those processes can only help and not hurt. Also attended the School Systems Implementation Team with the Delnor School District Administration staffs, and I wanted to follow up on conversations that we had at our last board meeting specific to the Klamath regulations, so the least proposed regulations by the Department of Fish and Wildlife. I know this was a great concern to a lot of people in the community, in addition to the guide services that are actively engaged on the Klamath River in not only the summer and fall months, but also in the spring during the spring Chinook fishery. Talking closely with guides and also talking closely with Frank Alay, who attended the meeting last week of the California Fish and Game Commission, it appears that the proposed regulations will go before the commission on April 17th. However, the current, the current direction, it appears from staff of the Department of Fish and Wildlife, is that they're not accepting the tribe's proposed regulations. They're not supporting the tribe's proposed regulations at this time, because there's not enough scientific data to support those regulations. They've encouraged and offered to the tribes the ability to find some dollars to actually help gather that information. At this time, I'd also encourage our local guides, which there's quite a few of on the Klamath River, to also collect that anecdotal or scientific information on potentially the loss of Chinook salmon, specific to Blue Creek, where it seems to be one of the major hang-ups with mortality. And I want to make sure the guides take a look at this, because I know in particular, Mike Koopman, who's one of the more active guides on the Klamath River, along with several others I know, make, they make close to 100 trips a year down there on the Klamath, and those people stay and play in the Klamath area. They don't leave that Klamath area for a period of time, so it's extremely important business to So, it's extremely important business to our economy and I don't want to see it shut down over anecdotal information. I also had a chance to meet briefly with Senator McGuire at the Rowdy Creek Fish Hatchery Dinner. I'm encouraged by some of the comments that he offered and look forward to potentially meeting with him this week in Sacramento when I'm traveling on county business. And I want to reflect on the Rowdy Creek Fish Hatchery Dinner. As many of you know, it's, it's near and dear to my heart, Rowdy Creek Fish Hatchery. The derbies itself, which provide pretty much half the funding for the operating budget of the Rowdy Creek Fish Hatchery have been going on for more than 40 years. Originally started by, uh, Jim Griggs, has a Calore Derby and picked up by the Westbrook family not too long after, which created essentially three derbies in our beautiful county. That fish for Steelhead in the winter. And this year, with the help of the Westbrook family, who's continued their participation in the Smith River Rancheria under leadership of Karen, Kara Miller as the Chair of the Rowdy Creek Fish Hatchery Board, and the, and the great volunteerism of Kimberly Swift, they attracted 22 teams from all over Oregon and all over California, New York, beautiful county, to enjoy recreating around our Steelhead Fishery. And it was a pleasure to see everybody here and especially at the dinner Friday night where we probably had close to 200 people helping to raise and support dollars for our Rowdy Creek Fish Hatchery. And that's all I have at this time, Chairman.
Thanks. Well, I had a few meetings, uh, also had a Local Transportation Commission meeting where we looked over the Redwood Coast Transit Authority audit with no special findings there or nothing of any significance. Uh, the last chance grade economic impact hadn't come out yet, so we didn't get a chance to, to go over that, but we will at our next meeting. And got very little, uh, as far as updates on, on any other projects. Had a Klamath Management Zone Fisheries Coalition meeting that, that we don't have very often. Uh, this county has always participated in the past. They're having some funding issues, uh, but, uh, we have advocates for the salmon fisheries, both for the commercial and the recreational salmon, salmon fishing seasons on, on how many fish and that type of thing. And, and each year, we send, uh, we send two representatives to the Pacific Fisheries Management Council Meeting. This year, we'll send, uh, to Vancouver in March and then April in Ronert Park for the final decision. So, anyway, there's enough funding to, to do that, but we'd like to see them, uh, uh, keep up with, with what they're doing. They do a great job for us, uh, keeping those people here, uh, in the community, um, longer, fishing for salmon. As Supervisor Gitlin talked about the Fair Appreciation Dinner, um, there was, uh, it was fairly well-attended, probably not as well-attended as it should have been since it was on Valentine's Day. But there was quite a few awards that went out. There was a special award for, uh, Joseph, to Joseph Williams, uh, the CCPRA Rodeo Committee of the Year, again, Delnart County, seven years in a row now that we've, we've won that one. The Volunteer of the Year was Bill. For some reason, Randy never said his last name. I asked several other people if they knew his last name, but he's been the Volunteer of the Year, but Bill was all I got. He's a carpenter, he does a lot of work there. So, again, thank you, Bill. I don't, sorry, I don't know your last name. Uh, Friend of the Fair Award went to the Lake Earl Grange. The Lake Earl Grange, uh, put on a great dinner, um, and they've been very supportive of the fair and instrumental in helping, uh, to pass, uh, Measure F, uh, which, uh, allowed the fair to continue on. We got a significant award this year, uh, from the Western Fairies Association, um, which was the Lou Merrill Award, um, went to Delnart County, and I think it should have went specifically to Randy Hatfield for all the effort that he put, put into doing all the things that he did. Uh, the West, Western Fairies Association Blue Ribbon Award went to Kevin Hartwick, um, which was, uh, was a, a great award for him. Uh, he was very emotional, um, so that was a, a great deal. Also had a, uh, UROC two-by-two to discuss the off-site impacts of the casino and motel that they've put in. And we had some discussions on the, uh, MOU, uh, with the cross-deputization for the, with the sheriff. Uh, and, uh, those talks are continuing. Uh, went to, uh, the tea party, had an informational debate with, uh, between, sort of between Mitch Hannah and, uh, Dr. Duncan. The discussion was supposed to be around the, this new insurance thing that they've got going, the PERS insurance. And I didn't understand very much about it going in, and I'm not sure I understand anything about it coming out. So, hopefully, uh, we'll get some more information on that. Um, had a Resource Conservation District, uh, uh, meeting, um, not much to discuss there. They had a tire amnesty program that they were asked to maybe participate in. And, uh, the ranchers were maybe not too sure that they wanted to participate in that because of the size restriction on the tires. I did get to have lunch, uh, with, uh, California Senator, uh, Mike McGuire. Uh, we had, we talked about some, uh, economic development issues. Uh, there were several business leaders, uh, from the community that attended also. Um, had a good, a good discussion there. And then later, um, that evening, uh, went to the Rowdy Creek Fish Hatchery Derby Dinner and Auction that Supervisor Howard discussed, uh, where we, uh, were able to talk to Senator McGuire, um, a little more. And he made the rounds and had a lot of discussions, even though he didn't stay for dinner, kind of jetted out on us for the dinner and, uh, and auction. But, uh, he made himself, uh, very available and would, uh, discuss just about anything. So, that was, uh, good that he was there. Uh, had a Local Area Formation Commission meeting, uh, where we accepted the, uh, Municipal Service Review from the Resource Conservation District. Um, and we're, uh, got the filing for the final certificate of completion for the Recreation District for, for the fairgrounds. And that was about it for me. Jay, you got a report for us? CAO, Jay Serena?
Yeah, over the last couple of weeks, he's, uh, attended a few different, uh, goal committee meetings as well as, uh, meeting at IGRC. Been reviewing the mid-year budgets as they've come in. Um, should have a little bit more detailed report at the next meeting. We will be setting up meetings with a few of the departments that have a couple of issues that we've already established and we need to, uh, look at what that means at year-end. Been working on a number of evaluations. I had a lot of meetings with different departments and different issues. Working on the jail medical RFP and having some discussions with, uh, probation, juvenile hall, borrow and, uh, jail. Few meetings with different members of the public who had some questions and needed some assistance. Two-by-two with the UROC tribe and have been working on the outline for the county goals so that we can have a discussion in the near future. And, uh, was also fortunate to be able to sit down with Senator McGuire for a little while and, and have a discussion with him.
Okay, thank you very much. And we're running a little bit behind. Uh, at this time, I'm going to open it up for a public comment. Members of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding a matter listed on the agenda, you may be asked to hold your comments until the board takes up that matter. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Is there any public comment?
Hi, Linda Sutter, Fifth District. Chair Hemmingson, I just wanted to kind of give you an idea about the Sutter Coast thing. What they did is they're kind of doing a backdoor thing. So, 580 people has signed up for this new Sutter Coast, uh, PERS hospital thing, right? So, what happens? There's only one doctor here authorized to take care of those people, that's Dr. Pallador. That means that if you go to the hospital here at Sutter Coast, uh, they're going to pay for everything that happens to you at Sutter Coast under this policy. But, if you, you can only be taken care of by the doctors here, or you have to go to Santa Rosa to the new, the nearest Sutter Coast facility, which means, you know, it's going to cost you more in the long run. You don't want to sign up for this policy. Uh, when, when we got the letter, Cal-PERS people, um, it, it was all over social media and only people that signed up probably just didn't get a clear understanding of what's involved with that. So, just for your own information. And just to let you know too, um, I was very ill the first weekend of February and I drove myself to Grants Pass Hospital under excruciating pain because I will not go to the Sutter Coast Hospital. They, they charge you 65% more than any other hospital in the state. That's just so you know what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Hi, good morning, Steve Perez. Um, as part of the, uh, the invitation by Barbara Pearson to come and visit, uh, with her and, uh, to learn more about what's going on with, uh, Health and Human Services, um, we've been involved with a couple of other pastors, three other pastors who've come together and, uh, had opportunity to meet with, with the staff and to, um, take the time to learn a little bit more about the delivery of services, which is really important to us because we do have, um, a real close connection, uh, with people in our churches and of their needs. And so, um, the first meeting we had was with California Children's Services, which was a very interesting meeting because it was, uh, it was a, a kind of an event where people were allowed to just come and share what their experiences were. And I'm sure it was a real eye-opener for Barbara Pearson and the concerns, the deep, deep concerns, especially with families with special needs children and what they were going through. But I just really want to let you know two things, uh, about that particular meeting. The first thing is, uh, walking into the building there on North Crest and seeing the employees, the people. I'm just sharing this with you because I, I want to advocate here in a very humble way. People look exhausted, weary, very, very weary. And I don't mean that from a sense of labor. I mean that from a sense of purpose. When we went in and we were talking about California Children's Services, and as I got, learned, learned more about the span, the number of cases, it was obvious that there's a workload issue there. One that's very challenging for the staff. And yet, some way, somehow, they were trying to get the job done the best way that they could. When we had an opportunity, uh, a few days later to, to sit down with the various, uh, department heads, providing the various services through Health and Human Services, um, we came into that meeting and, um, you could see on the faces, uh, these supervisors, uh, it was kind of like, um, oh God, here we go, another meeting, I really got important stuff to do. But as we engage with them and we acknowledge that we understood their labor and the sacrifices they were making, uh, the idea being that there was a need for them to share with us. And we heard a lot of stuff, a lot of good stuff about the kinds of things that they were doing. And the exchange was really, really great. I share this with you from this perspective, is that there's a, a level of activity that's going on that needs to be advocated for, that we need to be talking more about it. And I promised my word, and I just want you to know, there's some awesome people working, awesome people working for the county at different levels, under some really probably very challenging circumstances, obviously. Let me encourage you to do this, and I do this with a real humble spirit. I don't know if you've ever looked at your county employee list to see which one of those are your constituents, but maybe just a visit from you, not as a group, but one-on-one. And going talking with your constituents and just encouraging them, just building them up. Letting know that you, as elected officials, know that you, they are your constituents and you appreciate the hard labor they're doing. Because let's be honest, real honest, there isn't enough money to make it happen the right way. And not even money necessarily, a salary gives you, a person, a sense of value. But when you come as elected officials and you meet with them, how are you doing? That's all I'm saying.
Thanks, Mr. Perez. Thanks for your observation. Great. Any other public comment?
Good morning. I'm Ron Phillips. I, uh, work for Rural Human Services and I also run the farmer's market. At some point, I think I have spoke to all of you about a bill that was passed and signed by the governor. It's called 1871, AB 1871, which is going to restrict, um, the farmer's markets here in Delnart County from allowing any produce vendor from coming and selling at our markets. It'll be California-grown only. I've been working with, uh, our new State Senator McGuire, uh, well before he was even elected, uh, to see if we couldn't get some kind of a change in that bill that was passed and signed by the governor, taking effect, uh, January 1. Uh, he has a staff member working on it and I've been supplying him every bit of information that I can. I found out this morning, uh, I called our two, uh, produce vendors who come from Oregon. The, our loss from just their sales alone is going to be over $50,000 for the season. And we, uh, I have talked to Paul Madera out at Ocean Air Farms, and he just doesn't have enough property, enough daylight, enough sunlight to be able to bring everything to the market that we need. So, at some point, I may have to go to Jay and ask for a letter of support for our market, uh, from the supervisors. So, I just want to let you know an update on what's going on with that bill. Chris, I need to talk to you two privately about some things. Okay? Any questions?
Thanks, Ron. Any other public comment? Did I see a hand up over here?
Hi, my name is Jessica Mercato and I work at the Delnart Economic Development Corporation. I'm also the Policy Chair of the Community Food Council. And I just want to applaud all your efforts. It's, um, some great updates, uh, that you guys are working on in economic development, from fishing of fisheries to cleaning up our community, to really having a focus on family and children, uh, opportunities, um, opportunities for all and working with our tribes. So, thank you for that. And, um, I'm, I'm hopeful to see that you guys are integrating smarter public policy. And I think, um, that one way, maybe this could be more, um, visually or more, um, you know, community-embraced and, um, is through, uh, with Martha, the Building Living, Building Livable Communities. I would really be hopeful to see how the principles and elements of those strategies are getting incorporated into our local community. So, I look forward, I hope you can bring that and we can see that in the future. And, uh, especially through our, um, incorporating through our policies for community planning and development, including, uh, especially land use and community engagement. So, thank you for your work on that and, um, would like to see more of it. And then also, um, Ron Phillips wants to talk to you about that AB, whatever it was. So, um, that's all, that's all for now and just, yeah, I think you'd like to see that, the smart growth policy. I do, I'll give it to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing no other public comment, then I'm going to close the public comment period. And we are running a little bit, uh, behind time. Uh, we have a Film Commission update. Mr. Palmer, welcome.
Welcome. Well, good morning, Supervisors. My name's Jeff Palmer, Executive Director of the Chamber of Commerce and the Visitors Bureau. And it's my pleasure this morning to introduce Cassandra Heseltine, who is the Film Commissioner for the Humboldt Delnart County Film Commission. She's going to give you an update on her office's activities. We partner with them to promote Delnart County. And currently, there is a small indie film being filmed right now in Delnart County.
Hello, thank you for having me here this morning. And, um, I hope that you have my PowerPoint presentation. Here we go. So, I have a few things that I want to share with you, what, what we've been doing for the past three quarters of the year, uh, as well as that you do have a current movie here. That's pretty exciting. We'll see when it comes up. Here we go. And I know, um, these slides I've shared before- And I know, these slides I've shared before, the first few slides, but I'll just quickly go over them. What does a film commissioner do? Because every once in a while, when I introduce myself, people go, "The phone commissioner?" And I've looked that up. We don't actually have a phone commissioner. I am the film commissioner and the liaison between productions when they're here and the county, and we help with all kinds of different resources. For this year, we've had, a lot of inquiries have come in, which is nice because that means they're always, you know, wondering if we have something up here that we're on their radar. We've had a few scouts for two different independent feature films, and one of them chose to film here, which is Primal Rage, and that's the indie feature film that's here right now. It's estimated right now that they've told me that they've spent at least forty thousand dollars. They're doing the numbers, and they'll let me know probably by the end of this week how much money they've actually spent. Those, that forty thousand dollars is the direct dollars that they've spent on hotel, going out to eat for lunch, their location fees, any of those kind of things that they've, money that they've spent here. Then there's the economic defect, which is the multiplier, I round to three dollars. It's two dollars and ninety-five cents for every dollar that they spend. You're supposed to multiply it by the two ninety-five. There's some new reports that are coming out that that might even be higher, but to be conservative, that's the number we're using. And so, before the money actually leaves the county, then it would potentially be around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars that it would affect our community, which is great. These are a couple shots of pictures I took last week with the producer and the director, as well as the director of photography, is that upper left-hand photo, and the director is the rather tall man, he's six foot eight, and he is Patrick McGee. He is known for special effects in Hollywood, does huge movies like Spider-Man, Jurassic Park Three, Artificial Intelligence, and so his special effects are pretty impressive. So I did get to see some of it on set, and it was, it was amazing. Yeah, so it'll be, it'll be an interesting movie for sure. They are on Palmer Westbrook's property, which is great for them, so they have a couple weeks of filming on their property, as well as they're going to be filming on a county road, and I think that might be it. This is something else that we've done this year that we wanted to let you know, that we created a location video that we launched around January first, and it's already had close to three thousand views. This is obviously in combination with Humboldt and Del Norte. And how, does this get, do we, can we go online?
Online.
Yeah, will it play? Oh, no, it doesn't. Does it go, will it go online? Like if I, if you click it, can you make it go? It's linked to YouTube, so it should play it if you can go online. Okay. So unfortunately, it, this is what happens when you have to transfer PowerPoints, sorry about that. But if you do go on our Humboldt-Del Norte Film Commission YouTube channel, you'll be able to see that we created a location video. We have a thirty, a thirty-second one and a three-minute one, and what it does is it highlights the locations that are in the area of what we have to offer for filming. And like I said, it's been viewed over, close to three thousand times already in the short amount of time since we've launched it, and it's great because we did send it out and target location managers, who are the people that bring productions to your area, as well as a lot of people just sent it out on Facebook and said, "Look at where I live," which is fantastic because that encourages tourism, which is definitely a byproduct of when you have filming in an area. So it's a fantastic video, I encourage you to check that one out. Another thing that we've also done is, last year, you might remember, we released the map of the movies brochure, which is movies that are filmed in Del Norte and Humboldt County, and I know that the first place that called us was the state parks here saying we need more maps, which is great, in that they're receiving a lot of attention for the area up here, people checking it out and going to the film sites, so that's fantastic. Again, another byproduct of having films in the area. We also, in September, had what is called a fam tour, familiarity tour. I might have brought that up previously, that we were going to have one. Well, we actually held it, and what we did is we brought up nine location managers from LA who work on all big feature films or commercials and reality TV, and they came up and they were able to check out both counties, and they spent a day here in Del Norte County checking out the redwoods. These are pictures, those top three pictures are actually their photographs that they photographed, and then they also ended up putting an article online on the Location Managers Guild of America, which is the largest guild for location managers, and in their magazine, The Compass, that they did, that they publish, make. So that, that was really nice. They put all these photos in there and wrote an article about coming up to the area, and several of them have called me since, trying to bring projects up here. They're pretty excited about trying to get their clients to come to the area. We did have a tax incentive pass. The new tax incentive has tripled the amount of money that is going to go out to film shoots, which is fabulous. It's below the line numbers, which helps them keep productions in California mixes competitive again with New York and Canada and Georgia and all those runaway shoots that we get. They're expanding the big budget for feature films and TV pilots and TV series, and so I, we really believe that starting this summer, that a lot of productions will be coming back to California, so this is very timely for us. And now, last but not least, I have been asked to stay on the board. I do not know what that, the vertical line is there, sorry about that. The, I've been asked to stay on the board for Flix, which is film liaisons in California statewide, so I'm not only a board member, but I've been asked to stay on as treasurer. And this was a nice little benefit that we had with our film commissions being a combo effect between Humboldt and Del Norte. Though this particular shoot did film in Humboldt, they did give us a special thanks, and as you can see, Del Norte was mentioned in that special thanks, which was fabulous. And I brought the magazine so that you may have it, and you can see that the special thanks is actually on the magazine inches away from Brad Pitt's face. So, so Del Norte was mentioned in there, which is, which is a great byproduct of having our two film commission offices together. So, that's my, my brief update. I know you guys were running late, so I rushed that along for you.
Great, Cassandra. Thank you very much. Any questions from board members?
You know, Cassandra, I'm a big fan of what you do in the Film Commission, and I know it's very hard to quantify the efforts, but I just feel that you're on the precipice of doing, having great things happen for Del Norte County. And I know we've been pushing at this, putting quarters in the slot machine, so to speak, and I want to commend you for your efforts. I know it's not been easy, but I would ask you to ask us, what is it that we can do to facilitate the process so we're bringing more commercials and more films and more exposure to our, obviously, unknown area? I mean, we're under photographed, quite literally, and what can we do as a board of supervisors to help you realize the success on behalf of the Film Commission?
Well, that's a great question. Thank you for asking that. There's a few things that US supervisors or the community could do as a whole, and one of the things is, is that, is helping me know what locations exist here, what are filmable, film-friendly locations, things that, and they don't have to be beautiful. People get confused and think, "Oh, I have to have this beautiful, stunning house," you know, "as a location to offer." It's interesting. If you think about movies and TV shows, a lot of times they're interesting and different and not necessarily these, this gorgeous, you know, beautiful, stunning home. It could be a rundown motel that's interesting and spooky-looking, anything that helps tell a story. So the more I know about the locations here, the more informed I am, the more I can put that information out into the location manager's hands. And so that's a big one, getting those photographs, knowing those areas. I can't always scout and also be in the office servicing the location manager. So it becomes a little bit of a two-way catch for me to be able to be in the field and be, be in the office for them. So the more I can be schooled in what you have to offer, the better. Obviously, funding never hurts. We did just hire an admin assistant for the first time in four years. I'm now in a staff of two. She's in office right now, and I get her for twelve hours a week, and that's a pretty exciting twelve hours, let me tell you. So obviously, funds always helps because the more that I can have someone assist me, the more I can be talking to the location managers and be out in the field. That's a big one. Let me think more on that, too, in addition to that, but, but those are the two, two things that come to mind. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for asking.
Supervisor Howard, you got something?
Yes, to add to Supervisor Gitlin's comments, I, I know basically I've been with the chamber for quite some period of time, and the direction from the chamber to essentially reinvest those TOT dollars that come from the city and the county, and to filter those down to the Film Commission, I think is a great opportunity for us to continue to expand these type of opportunities that come to our community. And I definitely encourage Supervisor Gitlin, working with the Chamber of Commerce Board and Visitors Bureau, to continue those efforts to, to bring Cassandra back year after year to continue her efforts to bring these type of films to our area. So thank you for your efforts, and continued good work.
Thank you. I also did forget to mention that there are two other videos, two short thirty-second videos that are also on our YouTube channel, and one is by the producer for the film that is here currently right now, and one is the location owner, Matt Westbrook. And both of them just did a lovely little testimony of what it's like to have a film here and how Matt, obviously, is, is happy to be having an economic bonus to owning a ranch here. And Angela mentions in there that they've been scouting here for two years, looking off and on, and didn't realize this far north that there was a film commissioner, and about a month ago, they were enlightened by that. And they were looking in the wrong places. They were looking in places that they would have never been able to film, and when they came to me, I was able to help them with that road permit, help them get a private property that was going to work better for them, and, and so she mentions that in the video. So if you'd like to see it in her own words, that might be fun for you to check out.
Great. Thank you. Oh, you got something?
I, I just have one little thing, and I don't know, it seems the two paths could cross, but our local Ocean Air Farms, there's just been a new, about a twelve-minute video of the life and activities of the Ocean Air Farms, and I don't know if you could check it out, and it might be something that could be on YouTube because it does show another aspect of Del Norte County, and it's, it's very well done.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Okay, seeing no public comment, then we're going to, thank you, Cassandra, I appreciate it. Thanks, Jeff. We're going to adjourn as the Board of Supervisors and convene as the Board of Equalization, and we're going to conduct a public hearing, I'm guessing. Yeah, I don't know.
Jennifer Perry from the Del Norte County Assessor's Office. The first appeal before you today is for Mr. Larry Childs. This is actually a penalty assessment appeal, so it's not directly related to the assessed value of the property, but a penalty that was placed for non-filing of a change in ownership statement. With every, under R and T four eighty-two, under every change in ownership, there's to be a change in ownership statement filed at the time of recording or within ninety days of the written request of the county assessor. So there was a change in ownership, October twenty-first of twenty thirteen, and there was no statement filed with the recorder at the time of change in ownership. The assessor sent out a request, and within ninety days, we didn't receive the form. So we sent a letter stating that the penalty was going to be placed on the tax bill.
Can you hold up for just a second? Do, do we need to open a public hearing and swear her in at this time?
Yes, we should.
Okay. I apologize for that. I thought we were going to get a little information, but it sounds like you're going right into it. So I'm going to open the public hearing at this time for a change of assessment, non-filing penalty fee for APN one-one-five dash seven oh four dash fifty-five, and I think, Kylie, I think you have to swear her in.
So go ahead, raise your hand.
I apologize for that, that's my fault.
Get you to raise your right hand and state your name.
Jennifer Perry.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matter, now pending before this board, will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you.
So picking back up where I left off, we ultimately received a change in ownership statement, but it was late and it was untimely filed. Under the taxpayers' rights, they can file an appeal to ask the board to remove that penalty for them. So the taxpayer has complied with turning in a change in ownership statement, even though it was untimely, and getting their appeal application in within the window of opportunity. So your role today is to hear them out, and under the Revenue and Taxation Code, they're here to basically present to you that they did not fail to file under willful neglect. So you have the authority to overturn the penalty that was placed on the property.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Childs? I believe you'll have to be sworn in by the clerk.
Can I get you to raise your right hand and state your name?
Larry Childs.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matter, now pending before this board, will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you.
Regarding this particular, first of all, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak to you. I received this trailer from a gentleman who was leaving the country, came to the county, went to the tax assessor's office, asked what I needed to do, went to the filing office, cleared all of the forms that I thought that I had to clear, held the property for approximately ninety days, and then sold the property. Then to my surprise, I received a notice of a lien being placed against me for non-compliance. I came down and asked, "What is this about?" And they said, "Well, you should have changed the ownership with the assessor's office." I had no idea. I listed everything on a piece of paper that I was supposed to do, accomplished all of that, and then to my surprise, again, I repeat, I received a notice saying that a lien had been placed. I didn't willfully neglect to do it, it was just a matter of, I didn't realize that I had to change it. I thought when I completed everything with the tax offices, that I was at that point in time clear. And so I'm asking for your consideration on this penalty. Thank you.
Mr. Childs, just help me walk you through the timeline. So you, you, you took over the property March thirty-first. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. When did you go into the assessor's office to inquire about paperwork that they had sent you?
It would have been the timeframe of November, when I first got the property, and we sort of process of selling the property in the December timeframe, and then it was completed, I think, the second or third week in January.
Okay, I'm, Sam, I just want to get the dates right, just as best as you can recollect, rather than saying, okay, you sold the property March thirty-first, cash change, and now Larry Childs owns this, this trailer, this mobile home.
On, does that, as of March thirty-first, April first, is that correct? That would be the approximate range.
Now, maybe I need to get clarification from the assessor's office, but some paperwork was sent to you, which you either didn't receive, but prompted you to go into the assessor's office and ask, "What about, what is this, this change of ownership?" So what I'm trying to get an idea is the timeline in which you came in and responded. I realize you've answered it, but was it a reasonable timeline? Was it an oversight? That's what I'm trying to glean. So I don't really know about December, January. Within ninety days, did you go into the assessor's office and say, "What is this paper?" Did you?
Well, originally, when the gentleman was getting ready to leave, and he says, "Look, I can't do anything with this, would you take this for me and liquidate it for me?" And the official bill of sale was the twenty-first of November, twenty thirteen.
That's the recording date? Is that the recording date?
No, that was the date of the bill of sale from him to me.
Okay. And I'm just asking these questions, I want to get the facts right. Jennifer, is this, did this record on March thirty-first, or did it record? Because that's a change of ownership, it's a recordation date, correct?
What we get, the need we use, the...
Need to be on the mic. Sorry.
Okay, so the first page of your packet, not the cover page, but the first page, is an HCD title search. Every month, because it's a licensed manufactured home with the state of California, we get a report that shows us all of the changes in ownership that have occurred with manufactured homes. So this particular transfer, you know, the title transfer is handled by the state in a different department. We just get notified of it monthly. So you can see that, it's the highlighted portion here, the transfer says 10/21 of 2013. So that's when we were notified. At that point in time, we send, B is this next part of your packet, we send a letter. It's got a cover letter stating that, under California R and T codes, you're required to return this enclosed form within 90 days of the change in ownership. Call us if you have questions, that kind of thing. So then we send the form, which is the next set of documents, with a date at the top that said, that is the 90-day limit of when to return it, and we wait for a response. If we don't get anything back, the next piece of documentation that is sent out, which is C, is the notice of penalty and abatement. And it lists the codes that we apply this penalty under, and it states, you know, "We did not receive your change in ownership by this date, therefore, the penalty is being applied." At that point in time, the taxpayer can file the appeal to have it removed, which is what happened here. And we did get a change in ownership. D, he actually did record it, so, you know, in good faith, he turned it in in the end. It just was untimely according to the legal timeframe.
I've got it now.
Yeah, so that's why we're here today. The date that he turned it in, May 7th. Yes.
I have the, I'm clear on the chronology.
So the authority to overturn the penalty is with the board at this, you know, legally at this point, so.
And now I've got the chronology fairly clear, Mr. Childs, so I'm clear on that. I'll defer to my other colleagues.
Do you have anything else, Mr. Childs?
No, sir. The only thing I would like to repeat, though, is in good faith, when I did the transfer paperwork and such, I asked, and I actually called the state, saying, "Okay, what do I need to do?" And I was under the full understanding that I had completed everything. And then, when I received the notice, that's when I reacted to that, came to the board, and they gave me the necessary paperwork and said, "You need to do this to comply." And I did that. And then I received the assessment, which...
Okay, thank you. I think Supervisor McClure has a question for you.
Yes, Mr. Childs, when you received that December 30th, 2013, letter from the county, did you receive that letter?
I don't have any record of that.
Okay, so this packet with the application process, you don't have a record of receiving? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then, to the auditor's office, I would ask, are these sent return receipt required, or are they just sent general mail?
If we get them, they're just sent general mail. So it is very possible that something happened to it after it left our office, and we don't know. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any public comment?
You know, I mean, in a court of law, attorneys are always delaying any kind of process, whatever the situation is. So, I don't know, I don't think I would, like, stick somebody because they missed a timeframe. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, so I'm going to close the public hearing at this point and bring it back to the board. Supervisor McClure.
Yes, I would move that the, that it has been established to the satisfaction of the Board of Equalization that the assessment appeals for failure to file a change in ownership statement was due to a reasonable cause and not due to willful neglect, and move that we waive the penalty.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Kylie, will you poll the vote, please?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, at this time, I'm going to break off. I'm going to do the consent agenda. If you can hang on for just a second, are we in a rush?
No, it's just the exact same situation with one other...
Kent.
Okay.
So if you guys want to do it real quick, we can, otherwise we can...
Okay, let's do it real quick, then.
We're getting too late.
Sorry, I apologize. Okay, so we're going to open a public hearing for the assessment non-filing penalty fee for parcel number 115-702-11. Does she need to get sworn in again, or is she, does she need to get re-sweared?
It's a different public hearing, so yes, we need to go through the same process.
Okay.
Can I get you to raise your right hand and state your name?
Jennifer Perry.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matter, now pending before this board, will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay. So as stated, this is the exact same situation, exact same documents, just different dates for the windows of opportunity. There was a change in ownership on November 8th of 2013. No change in ownership filed at the time of recordation, so assessor sent out the request. We didn't receive that within the 90 days. We applied the penalty. The change in ownership statement was ultimately filed with our office in good faith. We did get that from her, but we're here today because she has the opportunity to appeal it. Since we cannot overturn it, we're here to ask you for that.
Okay. Is Tammy Carr here? Is that you? Okay.
Tammy, can I get you to raise your right hand and state your name?
Tammy Carr.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this matter, now pending before this board, will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
I've never done this before, but I actually did file in time because when I bought the home on November 8th, she gave me all the tax documents. She was behind on her taxes, and I have the proof that I did do it. She told me to bring it. I don't know what to say. I did file what I was supposed to do. I put the taxes and had everything done. She gave me all the information. And I didn't get, I did everything that I was supposed to do, like they told me to do, and then I got a letter saying that I didn't put it in my name. And I brought down the tax clearance showing that I did do it in my name before I even moved in the home. I moved in the home on December 3rd, and I had to do all of this before I moved into the home, so.
Okay. Jennifer, can you speak to that form or whatever she's got, that she says that she did, and...
The tax clearance, one, the one you told me to bring?
Yes, yes. Okay, I'm going to use the microphone, so just a second. So we don't do change of ownerships on tax clearance certificates because all that is is stating that the taxes have been paid. It's not an official change in ownership. So again, the second page is the title search from HCD, which they are telling us that they switched the title over to Tammy Carr's name on November 8th of 2013. So that's our starting date for sending out requests for information. The next page, nothing was received at the time of recording, so January 15th, we sent the request. Don't know what happened to the request in the mail or anything like that, so we did not receive it back. On the 16th of April, we enrolled the penalty assessment. We did receive, you know, she must have got notification of it because we've been in contact, and we did receive her actual change in ownership statement May 23rd, so she did turn it in. And then the assessment appeal was filed to come here today to ask you to overturn it, as long as it wasn't willful neglect, so.
That's what it is. I didn't willfully neglect it. I did put the title and everything in my name in the timely manner because the lady told me I had 90 days to do it. And I did everything that I was supposed to do. The one thing I did is I didn't have my proper address. I thought it was 221 Benson, and it was the different address. So I haven't even, I didn't even get my title to my house or any of this paperwork until I put in my change of address. I had to go and tell everybody my proper address. So the paperwork she's talking about, I didn't receive until I put in my change of address for the proper one. So I didn't willfully neglect this. I did everything that I was supposed to do.
That's a good one.
Thanks.
Okay. Is that it?
Yes, that's it.
Okay, any public comment?
I just wanted to say...
No. Come on, come on.
It seems like there's some miscommunication somewhere. This is, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing no other public comment, then I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, I'd like to waive, motion to waive the late fee, or this fee, on parcel number 115-702-11. Site is addressed 215 Benson Street. As per the paperwork, I'd like to have that fee waived.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
I have a second discussion.
Just need clarification. That was a establishment that there was no willful neglect, correct?
I just have one comment.
That left to him to his motion.
Would it help to send these notices out with a return receipt so that we can make sure that they get the, might be a, if we're going to continue to have a penalty attached to the willful neglect, that we need to have, make sure, at least in my mind, we'd have to make sure that the people actually got the notice.
Right, right, yeah.
So that's the concern that I have, and I think the rest of the board, is we're not sure they got notice. She says that she's got a wrong address. Mr. Childs says he never received anything.
Right.
And it doesn't look like they were trying to get away with anything or willful neglect. So maybe if we could just send out that return receipt so that it gets attached to our stuff.
Yeah, it's pretty rare that we have this happen because we do hundreds of them, and it's just what we have to do under the law, but it does happen. And, you know, there's people out there that steal mail or something gets lost, and you never know. So it does kind of come down to your word against theirs unless you have some sort of...
Since I've been a board member, these are the first two that I can remember ever coming before me.
And then I just have one, one comment on the second applicant, Section C. When we look at the assessed request for the role change, it didn't identify that $100. So we're making a motion on a document that didn't identify that, where the other document did identify the $100 penalty.
You're looking at Mrs. Carr's?
Uh-huh. That page two, when the other packet, it identified the $100 penalty that we were waiving.
Oh, in the...
And this one doesn't have it.
Yeah, it's in the notes section.
Yeah, I'm seeing it right here. This is the paperwork you gave us here.
I know it's on this one, but it's not on...
Document number 905644, penalty amount $100.
It's just a note that goes...
Dated April 16th.
Okay, because this one's different.
So, that's a standard fee, Jennifer? The $100?
Yes, it's $100 or 5% of the assessed value, whichever is greater.
Right.
And I will check, I'll check on that, Martha.
Do I need to amend my motion to include...
Just to make sure it was clear.
No. No, we just want to make sure. I'm thinking the direction is that we send out a return receipt so that we make sure that whoever is supposed to get it, gets it. Okay? And we have a motion and a second. You bet. Will you poll the vote, please, Kylie?
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, we're going to move on to the consent agenda.
We have to adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. We're going to adjourn as the Board of Specialization and reconvene as the Board of Supervisors, and we are going to take up the consent agenda. And those items, number three and six, have been moved to regular, or general government. So if I could get a motion...
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any public comment on the consent agenda only? Okay, seeing no public comment, then we're going to bring it back to the board. And Kylie, would you, any discussion? Kylie, would you poll the vote, please?
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemmingson?
Yes, I need to recuse myself on item number seven.
And Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Okay, in that consent agenda, we have a proclamation to celebrate the Crescent City Women's Club 100th anniversary. Congratulations, ladies. And Supervisor McClure has that proclamation, and she's going to read it.
Thank you. It's an honor to be able to read this, and it's resolution 2015-010, "In celebration of the Crescent City Women's Club 100th anniversary. Whereas in 1913, seeing there was a definite need for cultural improvement and refinement in this remote area known as DelNort County, and since Crescent City was the county seat and the northmost point of California, there was a need to show leadership, enhance the business community, improve education, promote a visionary concept in this area, and promote Crescent, and the prominent Crescent City citizen, Lillian McNulty, opened her home to influential civic-minded ladies to discuss, and from that event, around Ms. McNulty's kitchen, the DelNort Improvement Club was formed. And whereas with the formation of the DelNort County Improvement Club, and living up to their name to improve DelNort County, the ladies proceeded with community activities and improvements, such as beautifying the south entrance of the town at this S-curve, attending civic and government meetings, volunteering throughout the schools, and bringing their influence to bear on various other areas in the community of concern. And whereas the DelNort County, the DelNort Improvement Club saw a need to have an association with a greater group of women and volunteers in order to accomplish the many needs of the statewide, of many needs statewide and nationally that would benefit Crescent City and DelNort County, such as the white and yellow lines in the centers of our highways, the conservation of many state resources such as the redwoods, native wildflowers, and the California coastline, and public education. And whereas in 1915, the DelNort Improvement Club joined the California Federation of Women's Clubs and the General Federation of Women's Clubs, the largest women's volunteer organization in the world, and changed their name to the Crescent City Women's Club. And whereas during the 100 years since joining the Federation, the Crescent City Women's Club has continued in the spirit and mission of improvements in education, community, morale, civic activities, and in the arts, making a positive impact on the local community and the individual citizen. And whereas by sponsoring many projects throughout DelNort County, such as well baby clinics, volunteer teaching in public schools, library and literary projects, grandparents tutoring in the schools, troop support in every national conflict, music, art, and writing throughout the community, and the upkeep and beautification of the schools and other facilities, student scholarships for higher education, and many other outstanding accomplishments throughout Crescent City and DelNort County. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors, the County of DelNort of California, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2015 as a month to honor and celebrate Crescent City Women's Club 100th anniversary, and urge and encourage all political and cultural entities and all citizens of every age and every endeavor to join in this recognition of the centennial celebration of the Crescent City Women's Club on this, the 24th day of February 2015.
Anyone? Would you like to come up and say anything?
Thank you.
Come here, honey. Thank you, Board of Supervisors, Roger, Jerry, and Martha and Chris. I'm Liz Freeman. I'm a past president of Crescent City Women's Club, and I'm very pleased to introduce Jane Kane, who is our current president of Crescent City Women's Club. And we're just thrilled for the proclamation. Appreciate it so much. We have just been our joy to operate and work in DelNort County for all these 100 years. When I first joined the club years ago, I went through, and Janie has done the same thing, by the way, I went and dug out all the old minute books, read from 1913 all the way through to 2012. I went and dug out all the old minute books, read from 1913 all the way through to the present day. And that is the way you get to know a club. And I am so proud to be a part of Crescent City Women's Club. I hope that we can continue to work hand in hand with the governing bodies in the county and the city. And we're doing some real special celebrations during this 100th anniversary year. And we want all of you to be on the alert and watching the papers, and I hope you'll be in contact with us and come and participate. There'll be a special celebration in April, and we'll be sending out some invitations and notices for all of you to come. And Janie, do you have anything to say, honey?
Ladies, thank you so much for everything you do in the community.
Thank you so much. Hope to see, hope this continues for another 100 years. Another 100 years, thank you.
I just want to let the ladies of the Women's Club know that a few years ago, they made a scholarship contribution to my daughter, and she is now a registered RN in California. So thank you for supporting our children.
Okay, we're going to move on to budget transfers. Is there any public comment on the budget transfers? We have two of them. One in the amount of $17,652 with TUP, as requested by Health and Human Services, and one for $6,844 Homeland Security requested by the County Administrative Office. Can I get a motion?
I move that we authorize budget transfers 02-02 and 02-03.
Add a second?
I'd second that motion.
I have a motion and a second. Kylie, could you poll the vote unless we have a discussion? No discussion? Please poll the vote.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, we're going to move on to regular, regular business, item number 14. We're going to consider a written application from Northcrest Mobile Home Park LLC. Heidi?
Good morning. In October of last year, I sent a letter to the new property owner of the Northcrest Trailer City Mobile Home Park on Northcrest Drive, requesting that the owner connect to the public sewer system as is required or allowed by Delnort County Code. As many of you are aware, in 2010, the county applied for a community development block grant that was successful that extended the public sewer from West Madison to roughly the West Park Properties, which is very close to Old Mill Road, and in very close proximity to this park. Delnort County Code also allows the recipient of a letter to request that the written, that the requirement to connect to the sewer be suspended or modified upon request by the Board of Supervisors. And that must be, a decision must be made within 30 days of receipt of the letter by the county. We have received a letter from the attorney, an attorney representing the current property owner. He's listed a variety of reasons of why he doesn't believe that they should be required to connect. The, probably the biggest one is that they feel that they've made significant repairs to the onsite sewage disposal system, which places it, in their opinion, in perfect working order. They also cite the burden on the park residents as far as the additional cost of having to connect to the public sewer, and how that would be passed along to them. They've also mentioned selective targeted enforcement. Which I can say at this point that I also sent a letter at the same time to the owner of West Park Properties making a similar request. So the one thing that I focused on in the board report is the fact that if they have in fact made all these repairs to the septic system to place it in such a great condition, we do not have any verification that those repairs have been made. They weren't done without at least a local permit through our environmental health department, which we know that they are responsible for receiving, as well as likely a permit from California Department of Housing and Community Development, and also likely a permit from the Regional Water Quality Control Board at Santa Rosa. So if in fact they do have the permits from the other agencies, we'd like to see them and talk to them about that. We do know that they don't have the permit from us, but we feel as staff for the CSA that it's really difficult to make a decision on whether or not to recommend to the board to actually suspend that request without that information. So the way that we've staged our, the recommendation is to hold the written request incomplete, pending receipt of those three items, verification of the local permit, the HCD permit, and the water quality permit. Once that's been received by staff, we will review them to determine if they're complete, and then we would return to the board with a second recommendation.
So is the clock still ticking then? They have 30 days then, or this?
We have to take some type of action within 30 days.
Just for clarification, I think I can help with that answer. If you determined that the request is incomplete, it's going to stay it until the, until, until the, all the requested documentation is provided to the, to the board. And then at that point, the 30 days would then start to run.
And if they don't, if they don't send anything in to complete it, does that put it on a permanent hold? What are we doing here?
I think at that point, the board could bring it back and then make a determination to deny the request.
So, so do we give them a limited amount of time to provide that information to us?
I would leave that up to you. I think you have the ability to give them a reasonable amount of time, whatever you feel that would be.
That's a good idea.
What is the pleasure? Mr. Howard?
Just, just to clarify, besides the permits that have been requested by the county to verify the septic system improvements, has anybody from the Mobile Home Park been in contact with CCD staff specific to going out onsite and looking at what these improvements might have been?
No. We, during the course of them making some of the repairs, we did have a staff person do a drive-by and observe that some things were happening, but I believe they were pretty much told that they didn't-
To date, there has been no evidence provided of improvements, okay.
No.
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Heidi, I have two questions. Number one, before the park actually entered escrow or during the escrow, was the Northcrest Mobile Home Park buyer advised that he would be, he would be compelled to, mandated to hook up to the sewer? Was he at any time advised in meetings here before he actually committed to purchasing the park?
In February of 2014, he attended a meeting in our office that was attended by the city manager, city public works director. They were there specifically to speak about connecting to the public sewer system. We had the representative from the Regional Water Quality Control Board in attendance, county staff. To answer your question, yes, he was very aware of the fact that that's where we were headed.
And he was aware of the cost, which I'm reading in your report, is I think $729,000.
Yes, and that, the city staff was there to discuss that because they've, they have a financing package, and they were there to, you know, discuss the details as far as how that could be carried out.
The way I see the, this item coming across is that we are asked as the Board of Supervisors to either grant a suspension, request for suspension is what they're asking it, or deny it. So is this a motion, a potential motion that is a negative notion? No, we're not going to allow the suspension of the county's request to connect to the public sewer system. How are we phrasing this? Is this a negative declaration? That's what my question would be.
Well, as a staff person, I would like to see any evidence that they've actually performed the work and that they've actually repaired the system to a standard that is, protects water quality for our area.
But to your knowledge, there are no permits filed.
I know there have none that have been filed with the Delnort County Community Development Department, Environmental Health Division, since the current owner took ownership of the park.
Thank you. Supervisor McClure?
Yes, at this time, I would like to move that we find that the written application is incomplete, and we are asking for pending documents that are listed in Exhibit A of the board packet, and that we give the applicant 90 days to respond, or we will take this matter back up again to deem it either complete or given order of action.
I'd second that motion.
And any public comment? In, in discussion, then I'm going to bring it back to the board then, seeing no public comment. I'd like to shorten that timeframe up. I think they've had ample time now. I would think 30 days would be more than enough time. Is there any, do we have any restriction on the amount of time we give them to produce the documents?
There's no actual restriction on that, though I'd just say that the more time we give, the more reasonable it looks.
And should we be reasonable? This, it appears as though they've been, they've had notification that they were going to have to hook up, and now they're blocking it hooking up, saying that they've done things that we have no information on, so.
Mr. Chairman, would you consider the median point of 60 days as a point of reasonable time?
Well, that would be up to the motion maker if she wants to change that. I just, I would be, I would be more willing to go to a shorter timeframe.
I would be, I would be willing to, to change it to the 60 days, but I'm reluctant, primarily because I want to give our staff enough time that once those, once those permits, if they exist, are submitted, that our staff would be able to do an analysis of those permits and an analysis of the work that it's done in order to deem it complete. Because a lot of times, you can have a permit, and in the application, you get the permit, but you still need additional information that needs to string on with that permit. And so I was giving the 90 days not for the, not for the applicant, but I was giving 90 days to make sure that our staff would have adequate time to respond.
Heidi, can you speak to that? The timeframe that you would need to go over these documents, is 90 days seem like a reasonable amount of time? Or would you like to see a shorter period of time, or does it matter?
I'm probably good with any, any time between probably 60 and 90. I think we have a clear idea on our end what type of information we would want. You know, I don't know what the timeframe from those other agencies, as far as what type of information they would want. I would imagine the requirements that water quality is going to ask for are going to be probably fairly significant. So maybe leaning toward the lengthier period-
Okay.
-might be helpful for them.
Sounds reasonable. Okay.
So can we move to the 60 days? Is that my understanding?
Well, she's going to stay, she's going to stay with the 90 days, which is, I guess, if that's, staff thinks they need to have that time, that's fine. So we have a motion and a second. Kylie, would you poll the vote, please?
Supervisor Gitlin?
Yes.
Supervisor McClure?
Yes.
Supervisor Howard?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hemmingson?
Yes. Okay, and we have a request for a letter supporting, to support Bill AB 171. Veteran services officer is not here? Okay.
I would move that we send a letter in support of AB 171, but I didn't wait for discussion, I'm sorry.
Okay.
That in, in support because I think that this, oh, that's a motion, yes, I'll stop there.
Okay, do I have a second?
I got a second?
Second.
Okay, any public comment? Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll bring it back to the board then.
I just wanted to say that this funding, being able to move it towards permanent funding is really helpful for the veteran services officer because it takes the guess out of what's going to be available. And that's why we would like to see it, I think, as a permanent funding rather than a funding that comes annually.
Perfect, thank you. Any other discussion, Roger?
Yes, I actually wanted to have this matter tabled because in my time that I found this was going to be on the agenda, I had conversations with the VFW Post and the commander, Mr. Johnson. They know nothing about this. They're not in the loop on this. And they've asked me to, for a time period, so that they can look into this and find out what exactly this is. They feel very neglected, they're out of the loop. So my, my feeling is I'd like to introduce a motion to, to hold this letter off until our stakeholders can be directly involved with this, rather than moving forward and just sending out this letter. The people who, those who are affected obviously don't know anything about it. So they've asked me to put it on hold until they can get some information.
I'm not sure of procedure. We need a second to that motion? Can we take double motion in the-
We would need a second, and if a second is obtained, then we would vote on the second motion first.
Yeah. Is there any second to that, to tabling this? Okay, seeing no second then, we will take up the original motion. Any more, any further discussion? Seeing no, okay, Chris?
I just want to clarify Supervisor Gitlin's comments. To be clear, is there a timeframe in which funding needs to occur?
Yeah, to answer your question, it would be with the next meeting. They just don't have any information on AB 171. I, I talked to a number of people, a number of veterans, and they're out of the loop.
Would we, would we be losing anything by tabling it at this time?
Well, it would be a come up at the next meeting.
Yeah, that, that motion has failed, and now the discussion is, is with the motion, Supervisor McClure.
It's my understanding that the, the subvention funds that were made available for the Veterans Affairs and the California Association of Veteran Services, that they were able to, they were able to acquire increased funding in the 2013-2014 cycle, and it was a temporary funding. And now this increased funding is going to become permanent funding. The one-time increased funding was used to utilize a new staff person, and that will be able to continue, they're expanding services. And so it is a vehicle for them to be able to expand services. Now, when the expansion of services, to me, that is when the, the veteran services officer will talk to the members of the veteran community that seek services and find out what needs to happen. But that's usually done annually in their budget process. This is just making sure that the secured funds that came in at 2013-2014 now become permanent funding. So it's not really a, it's not really, we don't know anything about it. It's that it's securing, it's securing the funding for the veteran services officer. So I would urge that the board support the motion with a yes vote.
And my motion stands.
Okay, so-
Mr. Chairman, can I just say? I don't disagree with this. We're talking about sending a letter to the Assembly Committee to support AB 171. We're not talking about what we're actually going to do, it's what the Assembly is going to do. So I, I'm asking that there be a little forbearance and involve the stakeholders for a medium. So you have my no vote on the basis of the veterans that asked me to please hold off on that basis. So that's what I'm going to ask them to do. They're the ones that are directly affected.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye, opposed?
Aye, nope.
We have one no and three in favor. That motion passes. Okay, we've got item number three, that we have pulled off the consent agenda and are now, that we've moved to regular government. And this is to prove and appoint a member of the Board of Supervisors, Dale Watson and Mary Jo Duncan, to the Local Enforcement Agency Independent Hearing Panel. This is for a four-year term. Heidi, do you have anything to say on this, or?
It's a very active panel. They've never met, so. Yes, so we're just, we're looking for a, a member of the board to sit on the panel in the event that we have some issue with solid waste permitting, that we'd have the full group in order to hear the matter.
Okay, so this Supervisor Sullivan is on there evidently, he's until March 22nd, and you've never convened. That is his kind of meeting right there. I would- Well, can I get off of something else? I guess I could do anything I want, I'm chair today. I guess the norm would be that Supervisor Howard would volunteer for that, but since he's taken over Supervisor Sullivan's spot, but he didn't look very excited about that. Is anybody, does there anybody that wants to volunteer to be on that from the board here?
Sure, I'll do it, absolutely.
I was going to say, I thought that Supervisor Howard would be a good appointment just in case there is some kind of need for separation from solid waste. And that that would be a, that would be a clear-cut, separate group in case that, in case that's where the conflict was arising. So that's why I would support Supervisor Howard.
Well, I'd, I'd support then, since there needs to be that separation, and Chairman Finnegan didn't come today, that maybe Chairman Finnegan would be better suited for that position.
I hate to volunteer him into any- I, I hate to volunteer him into anything, and, and I, since they've never met before, I, I don't, I suppose if there's a conflict, do we need an alternate or something, or maybe we could have an alternate, maybe Supervisor Howard, you would be an alternate if there was a, a issue with Supervisor Gitlin being the appointee?
I have no problem with that.
Okay. So if, if we have no problem with that, is this by consensus, or do we need a, a motion?
You can just do it. I think you can just make the appointment.
Okay. So I will appoint Supervisor Gitlin as the member, and Supervisor Howard as the alternate, and also Dale Watson and Mary Jo Duncan, if that's good with the rest of the board. If they have an issue with that, let's move on.
Heidi, I'll be getting in touch with you.
Let's move on. Okay, we're going to take up item number six then. We have an appointment for the Solid Waste Task Force. It's a five-year term, and we have a couple of applicants, I believe, if I remember right. Two applicants. Mr. Ward.
Thank you, Supervisor Hemmingson. There are two applicants, there is one vacancy for the Del Norte Solid Waste Task Force, which is an advisory body to the Del Norte Solid Waste Management Authority. The appointment you make today will have to be ratified by the City Council. There are two applicants, Mr. Craig Strong and Ms. Eileen Cooper. The task force, the eight, other members of the task force did meet, and they did consider the applicants and interviewed them, but they did not vote on a specific recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
I would nominate Mr. Craig Strong.
Okay.
Before a second, could we have a discussion, or is it?
Sure.
Before, give us a second. Ted, could I just ask you a question? Is there a component to a five-year term, or is there a, is this an arbitrary number? Why is this a five-year term?
All the terms for task force appointees are for five years, because the task force is charged specifically with reviewing the Califor, the Integrated Waste Management Plan for the county. And so that is done on a five-year cycle. They have to do that every five years.
I'll second.
I think Supervisor McClure already did, but is there any public comment? Any other public comment? Okay, seeing no other public comment then, oh, go ahead.
I recommend Eileen Cooper for that position. And the reason is, is because she's very meticulous in what she does, and she's all-knowing. So, I mean, I don't, I don't remember the other name of the guy, but Eileen's got it going on. Give her a chance.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing no other public comment, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just wanted to reiterate that I think Eileen does have it together and is very meticulous in what she does when she's working on a project. I was leaning towards Craig Strong because of the necessity that we have to take a look at of the trash in our oceans, and as different trash is, is, is moving here, and he being a marine scientist would be of assistance for us to be able to take a look at what's coming from Japan as it arrives on the, on our coast.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Okay, we're going to move on to legislative and budget issues. Jerry?
In regards to the legislative issue, we did receive a request this morning through Senator McGuire's office to provide a letter of support in regards to SB 288, which was, I think, predominantly in the newspaper today regarding the theft of burrows. And if the board could give direction, we would form a letter and send that in support. That is the only request that's come in since the agenda was posted, and it only takes direction from the board.
Okay. Any, any issues with sending a letter of support? Basically just changes the penalty to a felony for cutting burrows. Certainly not a bad thing, as long, I mean, they have an issue with enforcement now, maybe, hopefully it would be more of a deterrent. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And regarding the budget, we are in the middle of the budget review for the mid-years. There will be some meetings set up. We, like I mentioned, we have a few issues that have come up at the mid-year that we'll try to address, and have a little bit more detail at the next meeting.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
We'd like to ask you a question. That last meeting, we talked about sending McGuire a letter thanking him for his support of restricting the mining activities on the tributaries of the Smith. Did that happen?
It has not gone out yet, no.
Okay, but we're still working on it?
Mm-hmm.
Good, thank you.
Anything else, board members?
I just want to reiterate that I'm hoping in the near future, I'm not going to be at the next meeting, so I would hope it's not at the next meeting, but that we start scheduling the tours of our facilities.
Okay, with that, we are adjourned.